Okay, it's a little bit after seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. We'll call the Johnson City Council meeting number 23-02 to order. Cindy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Coke?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Burke?
Here.
I want to welcome everyone that is in the audience this evening. If you are here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask you to wait for that item to come up and to address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under public communications to address the council. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And what I typically like to do is invite all of the young people in the audience forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. It looks like we have lots of them tonight, but I think we have room up here, so why don't I just invite you all up to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And Maddie, I think we need to have a picture of this. I don't think we've ever had such a large group.
Don't all?
It's your show.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
What do your sweatshirts say?
I think we'll probably find out.
Oh, okay, alright.
They'll see. They'll see.
Copyright infringement?
The next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Mike, do we have any changes in the agenda?
None this evening, Mayor.
Council, any changes? Not? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
A move.
Second. Have a motion and a second discussion? Cindy, vote, please.
For Evans?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Martin?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Public Communications, we have one scheduled public communication this evening, and that is recognition of the Johnson Middle School Mock Trial Team for winning the state tournament. And I think maybe that might be what the T-shirts were all about? Okay, well, come forward.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because these boots weren't made for a lot.
And so what is that even?
Because she personally fell, so.
That was part of the...
Don't slip and fall.
Okay, yeah. Well, let me share some information for you about the team and why you're here tonight. It's been very nice to be here today. Then, I'm going to ask you to tell me a little bit about what you've done, why, you know, from your perspective, why you're here, and what a great opportunity it's been for you. Anyway, this is the Johnson Middle School Mock Trial Team, and they won the state tournament just recently, like, when we did this. First week in December, so very recent. Why I know is the Iowa Middle School Mock Trial Program is the largest in the nation. Each fall, students in grades six through eight are presented with a challenging legal problem and set up to prepare and present both sides of the case to panel of volunteer lawyers and judges. And you all participate in some way as an attorney or a witness. The Iowa Mock Trial Program has been in existence since 1983, and Johnson has had teams participate ever since it was its first grade, which is amazing. So this team, the Johnson-Gregor Team, is one of four middle school mock trial teams that competed this past fall for Johnson. The team is comprised of ten, there's ten of you? Ten seventh and eighth grade students, an attorney coach, who's the attorney coach for this? And two high school coaches. There we go. So this team, the Gregor Team, beat the Regis Middle School, which is in Cedar Rapids, in the final round of the state tournament, making Johnson number one out of 128 teams that competed across the country. That is amazing. You know, I am so impressed, because I'm in a... And I couldn't imagine when I was in sixth grade or seventh grade or eighth grade participating in a mock trial event like this. And so I am just so inspired by all of you. It just takes so much courage and so much skill and ambition to do it. Tell me, tell me, what this means to you? Is he your sponsor? I think it's like what we did for this year and for two years.
So I think that it's like what comes after like two years or like one year of hard work, and it's just like motivation to keep doing hard things.
So someone else, what did you learn from this experience?
I think that I learned to be a lot more confident in my speaking and really know, like, what to say as a witness and stuff like that.
And that, you know, that is an incredible skill. Feeling comfortable speaking to a group, speaking in public and, you know, not feeling intimidated by it.
I learned to come up with a solution during like a harder, like stressful, like time, come up with a solution.
Critical skill thinking, right?
Is this on?
Is this on?
Yes.
But just, what do you have to say about this group?
I just want to say this group means a lot to me. I've pushed them so hard for a lot of the time, not everyone else could be there, so it was really me and 10 middle schoolers, and that was very stressful. But every challenge I threw at them, every time I pushed them to work harder and gave them more feedback, they took everything I did, and I am so proud of how hard they've worked. And it just means a lot to me that I got to be one of their coaches this year.
Yeah, I mean, I think I've seen each and every one of you really come out of your shell during the time we worked together. Like, I don't know, you've all gotten so much more confident in who you are in watching you guys perform and seeing how excited you got after every win and how motivated you were to keep going and to keep getting better was very special, so I'm really proud of all of you.
Do all of you think you're going to be number one? No. Well, obviously, somewhere inside of you, you must have thought that, otherwise you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have worked so hard to have succeeded in doing it. So again, we are so proud of you. So how many of you are going to be as good as we grow up?
Don't do it. Be it scientists or do something, contribute to society.
Well, even if you don't become attorneys, you know, the skill that you're learning to teach, you know, will benefit you no matter what career, what course of action, what thing, or what education you pursue, so good for all of you. So this is, this is the trophy, right? Are we down with you everywhere? Which is what you're proud to be carrying with you tonight, right? So anything else to share with the group here tonight? Well, we couldn't, we could not be more proud of you. We need to have a group picture, so you're going to have to come together here. Are we a little offside? Let's look at that direction. Looking good. Keep up the good work. Thank you. They're going to have to lost the entire crowd.
While we are still under Public Communications, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go on to Public Hearings. We have one public hearing this evening, and that is to conduct a public hearing for the proposed 2023 through 2024 capital improvement budget and the proposed capital improvement plan 2023, 24 through 2027, 28, and Resolution number 23-11. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:18.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Included in the package tonight was the full capital improvement plan for you for your consideration, five-year plan FY '24 through FY '28, and the budget for the 23, 24 capital improvement budget is also included in there as well. The committees that have met over the past few months, the Park Board, council work sessions, and various council committees have met to discuss these projects for the capital improvement plan. And having done so, we like to have this adopted and kind of put aside before you finally adopt the budget, as these, the FY '24, the 23, 24 projects will be included in that budget that you adopt in March of this coming year. Exhibit A, as part of Resolution 23-11, is the multi-year summary of the projects by plan, and the 23, 24 budget calls for projects that total $25,544,380. All of these projects are going to require the issuance of debt for potential projects that are going to be supported by the tax levy, stormwater utility fees, TIF revenue, and water and sewer improvements. We will be seeking additional state revolving loan funds for a number of the projects. We are also going to be repurposing a number of previous bond funds that we have received for projects. Currently have a meeting set for this week with our bond attorney Eric Bullard and Matt Stufel, as we determine which projects we have that are either finished or very, very close to being finished and wrapped up, that I can use funds that are remaining project funds and transfer over versus borrowing now, which we know is a much higher interest rate time right now than we've had in the past. So we're going to try to make that issuance. Originally, the issuance of debt was going to be about 15 million. We think that we actually have that down to about 10 million, as we use some current funds that we already have. Let's see. Included also with the CIP or the full document is the city administrator, Mike Poggy Weaver's statement. And in his statement, he talks about the priorities of the capital improvements and the progress that we have, how we do the financing, and talks about our debt capacity and what, what we should be focusing on, and where our debt capacity will be at at the end of, or projected into the next fiscal year, and how that changes. And then, again, remembering that the city needs to not bring on more debt than we are paying off, and otherwise that trend is unsustainable. We've worked on that for the past several years. And I think we will be issuing the 23, 24 debt, actually is going to be issued in FY '23, '22, '23, which is going to mean an amendment in this year's budget and a difference kind of in FY '24 budget. But we're doing that because of the timing of our rating that we need to get, and when Matt feels is our best, our best opportunity to get the best rate, in all honesty. He thinks that we will be probably selling in May versus waiting to sell in July. Maybe that'll be changing here in a few months, I'm not sure, but that's kind of where we're at right now. Were there any questions regarding the CIP? I know we've talked about it for month after month after month. Any questions about the projects that are in there? Department directors are all here, if you have any specific questions about any projects? Again, reminder, although they're in there, you know, you guys have to approve every contract with an engineering firm or every public bidding for a project anyway, so even if we have it budgeted, if the times change at the time that we want to do the project and you choose not to, you have that right, of course, to not go forward with the project.
Council, have any questions for Teresa?
It isn't really a question per se, but I, I'm looking at page seven of the document, which is one of the, of Matt Stufel's spreadsheets. And I, and I think, and Teresa, you've done a really, really good job of telling us that we really need to make some tough decisions, but I think we all have to acknowledge we haven't made those tough decisions yet. And here's what, what my concern is. So if you look at page seven, it shows the tax rate there of a, per thousand dollars, and so for this year, it's at the $2.34, and that's with $2.6 million of lost funds coming in to, to keep it at that $2.34. And, but if you look at future years, and it's all highlighted that tax rate per thousand in yellow, that rate starts to go up, $2.44, $2.75, $2.90 some odd cents, $3.22. And that is with an additional $500,000 of lost money coming in to try to keep that levy low. So even with an additional $500,000 of lost money, it's, we're still not keeping that levy at what we want to do. And so we, and we had this discussion earlier, and obviously, and if you look all the way over, one of the drivers of it is, one is just overall size of project. So one thought was, well, let's, let me look at the, the east of Merle Hay, north of 62nd Avenue, and trying to figure out. And I know that's been phased a little bit longer to kind of manage that a little bit. And I think that's a really important project. You know, we've done such, we've done so many positive things in our city with the eastern Merle Hay, south of 62nd Avenue. That's, it, it's an important investment and a part of our community that really kind of felt like they weren't receiving a lot of attention from the city. I think it's been a significant, very positive project, and I, and we have to extend that to the north as well. But even with that phasing, we still have this financial challenge. So I think, I'm very comfortable with the CIP that we have for this year, but I, I think we all have to acknowledge that this is kind of a runaway freight train right now, and we're going to have to make some further adjustments, or that it's, or it won't be responsible managing on the part of us. And so we just need to accept, accept that responsibility, and hopefully we're willing to do that. But this is, we're not, we're kind of, we're right on the edge of something that could be very problematic, and so I'm, I'm really concerned about that. Not what we're doing this year so much, but what we have in the out years. I think we really have got to find a way to, to manage it, to rein this in, because, because we got a problem.
I, I agree with you, Tom, and I'd also point out to you, if you look at that third column, one, two, three, third column, you'll see that Matt's only projecting 0.3% growth in valuation. 0.3% growth in tax evaluation. That's because of what we heard from the L A, L S A, L A S. I always get those. Okay. Last week, they did confirm the 49% rollback and, and what that will do to us. And so that really takes a hit on your debt service levy and things like that as well. So, yeah, that runaway train's going to be coming at you from a couple different tracks, I'm afraid. So we're going to probably have to start early again. Every year, it seems like we start talking about this thing right after we put it to bed, about what are we, what are we going to start doing again?
And that, that might be that, that we're, I think, we're going to have to make changes in these out years of the CIP, and I hope, I look forward to that being either, whether it's a financing committee, initial discussion, and then a full council discussion. But if we, if we come back with the same CIP next year, it's going to be unsustainable. I, I can't support it. I can't support that much money of loss going in. I can't support a higher level of debt. And I, but at the same time, I also don't want to not do the eastern Merle Hay, north of 62nd project either. I mean, we've got to find other ways to do it, because that's an important project, too, so.
Great, thank you.
Other comments or questions for Teresa? This is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing then at 7:28. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution number 23-11? No move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion? Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
Second. Have a motion and a second discussion? Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember, ready?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda. Item 7A, consider Resolution number 23-14 approving modifications to the conveyance of real estate under the terms and conditions of an amendment number one to the development agreement by and among the City of Johnson, Douglas A. Carlson Development, Inc., and Johnson Hospitality LLC, and approving and authorizing execution of the amendment number one. Adam?
Good evening, Council. The purpose for this amendment is to primarily adjust the closing date for the end of this month and to remove a small portion of the property for the proposed transfer. The developer had previously received an appraisal, was not favorable. They've gone back and done a new appraisal. It has come back sufficient for them to be able to move forward, so they are anticipating now closing here at the end of January, but that is a couple months later than they originally anticipated and what's written in the current development agreement. The other issue it's changing here is the porch chair, I always pronounce that word wrong, but basically the car canopy here. That extends out into Outlot Z, which encompasses all the public, well, all the Town Center Association communal infrastructure, so all the roadways, parking lots, those areas. The easement and restriction agreement does allow for, does provide an easement for that car canopy, but we had, knowing that that would be private investments on public property, desired to sell that piece to the hotel property owner, or the lease agreements for the lease purchase and the construction of the infrastructure in City Hall would require the bank to sign off on that. And so having heard about this kind of late in the game, we're going to go ahead and utilize that easement as opposed to transfer that property, and then if we need to at some point in the future, work through that with the bank to be able to transfer that back. But it's not a material difference from a staff perspective, it was just a preference that if we can have the private investment beyond the private property, let's do that. But because there's already an easement for the car canopy in the ERA agreement, it's already ready to go in that way. Beyond those two changes, there's nothing else of significance. Purchase price remains the same, $183,400. The rebates do not change, site plan and the hotel design also all remain the same. Happy to answer any questions, Anna.
Council, have any questions for Adam? Not? Do we have a motion to approve Resolution number 23-14?
Hello?
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion? Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burke? Yes.
Motion passed. Item 8B, consider approval of claims in the amount of $872,885.90.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion? Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Motion passed. City Administrator Staff Comments?
I don't have any specific comments. I know Adam would like to talk about the Forestar Development Agreement.
Okay, Adam?
With the council having passed the CIP and with Tom's words of caution here, I just wanted to make sure the entire council is sort of up to speed on a project that's brewing up along 141, 415. Specifically, we're talking about approximately 57 acres here north of Road Drive and west of Northwest 110th Court. You can kind of see the yellow dots here, those two parcels primarily. The group Forestar Development is working towards a Flex Tech project consisting of approximately eight to 10 buildings on this properties. They're planning to be able to move forward with this as soon as essentially infrastructure is up there and ready for them. Based on our current CIP, we're working towards a fall of 2025 timeline for water and sewer, both which property, City of Johnson Water and Sewer. So we've been working with them on a number of different studies, trying to work on setting the connection fee district rates, establish the correct zoning classification, which would be preliminary E2, which is the employment district, kind of the heavier employment district one, looking at architectural design that they'd be trying to accomplish and looking at road improvements in this area. So there's some significant investments being planned by the City of Johnston, but also this developer. We anticipate this would be encompassed into a urban renewal area. There would be TIF rebates associated with the buildings and/or potentially infrastructure improvements, Northwest 110th Court in particular, the four-inch asphalt. It's going to need additional lanes and additional paving. So we've been working towards this, what was previously an MOU, but we've just phrased it as a preliminary project schedule, so that both parties, the city and the developer, are aware of what the anticipated investments are and the timelines for those, so that we can all plan accordingly for them to be able to move forward with the project and for the city to have the infrastructure up there appropriately. This is a quick concept map of what they're looking to do. If you ever drive in down Second Street, I believe it is, in Ankeny, 5548 Northwest Second Street, you'll see another similar type project that this developer has done. It has a very large US flag at the top of the hill there on Second Street, hard to miss it. That's his building, Flex Tech Building, kind of looks about a story and a half, various architectural features to it, but essentially has a multi-tenant feel to it with a little bit of warehousing and office space in it. So that's essentially what he's looking to try to do here is attract small businesses in that light industrial, office, warehousing, distribution style of businesses and have this right off the interchange of 415 and Highway 141.
Can you tell me again the address of the Second Avenue in Ankeny?
5548 Northwest Second Street. Don't belabor the point here, you can certainly read through the, the terms in there, but essentially mirrors the city's CIP plans, establishes our timeline for trying to get those connection fees outlined, and some of those road traffic studies that we're working towards up there, and lays out a tentative commitment for the developer to rezone the property and then construct the first building, approximately 75,000 square feet, within 18 months. within 18 months of the water and sewer infrastructure arriving up to the property. And also looks at the potential for the developer to construct the 18-inch water main that would traverse his property and then continue along Northwest Salyville Drive. That would be a significant upsizing by the developer, but something they're willing to instruct as part of the overall infrastructure improvements up here with that upsizing cost paid for by the city. Also willing to participate in any joint applications for RISE grants, if any of the businesses up here might be qualified for that, and undertake any roadway improvements necessary for the project to be initiated. So that's a real quick summary. Happy to answer any questions. But again, just kind of wanted to get this in front of the councils so that you had awareness of what they're working towards and how that aligns with the council's CIP plan improvements as they currently stand.
Questions for Adam?
Adam, did you say this structure they're building up here is just warehouses? Or is that more than warehouses?
There'll be a little bit of a mixture, I think. There will be, there'll be a warehousing component most likely in some of these. Many of the Flex Tech buildings have that. It could go down into grimes, kind of where Ignite facility is at. You see a larger version of these Flex Tech buildings, but they can have anything from a recreation facility like Ignite, more of an office feel, which the hubble ones in Virtuette Court, their most recent building, again, is kind of defined as a Flex Tech on the larger side of things. But most of them have some sort of a distribution element alongside the office. May have a small retail component to it, but it's not primarily retail. It's not primarily industrial in nature. It's a little bit of a mixture of types of commercial uses.
You've mentioned the Ankeny project that he has. How much larger from a sort of square footage standpoint, if you add these eight or nine buildings together, would this project be kind of in scope compared to that? And if you don't have the answer, you can maybe just...
I don't have a firm answer to that. And my guess, just having driven by that this weekend, is that the Ankeny building might be on the larger side of one of the buildings on here, but that's just one building. It's not a collection of...
Right. Yeah, so in essence, it's like he's got the one building in Ankeny, and this will be...
An entire...
Not nine times that, but it's maybe four or five times.
Five or six, that's probably larger than that, yeah.
And then if, so if we're targeting a, you said, fall of 2025, that water and sewer would be available. So they would probably be starting construction maybe middle of 2024, in theory?
Yeah, they built themselves a little bit of a buffer that, you know, they wouldn't really need an occupancy permit until 18 months after infrastructure is there. You know, you consider a general 12-month kind of timeframe to get a building of one of these larger ones in size to get constructed. But yeah, I think they'd be working on comparable infrastructure to serve these buildings along that same timeframe as our Phase B of water and sewer are headed up there. And then transition right into the foundations and footings after that is what their stated intent is. Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Adam. I looked at, I'm looking at the pictures of the development that's in Ankeny, and it's a very low profile. And the buildings are pleasant. The landscaping is practically nil. Perhaps they're not done. Perhaps that's based on what Ankeny has zoning there. So not, not something you can answer at this time. But I remember when we talked about this development prior, it was that there was going to be kind of a two-frontage to those buildings, especially that line directly to the east of 141. So I would like to have, maybe I could get a cut sheet or something about what kind of landscape requirements, what kind of development requirements we have in terms of the landscaping along the, well, actually, for the whole complex. I mean, is it, how many trees per thousand square feet of open space? What kind of landscape we're going to require them to do? I'd just be interested in what they're coming forward with. I know this is not a residential. This is a commercial site. They bought this property, which is probably very high value because they need the view for their buildings. Totally understand that. But I also think that landscape there is pretty substandard. And so I'm curious, what is going to be required? That's all.
Yeah, I'd have to refer you to Clayton or Aaron on what the E2 landscaping requirements are. But you know, our conversation is to point, which we're not at the site plan approval stage yet, but have been that architecturally, the building will need to have a good appearance, similar to the town center buildings, particularly the ones that, but 141, which wouldn't be their access point, really be kind of the back of their building from an access standpoint, but it's going to be the impression of people of Johnston coming in, not 141.
Hundred percent. It's an impression of Johnston, and we want it not to just look, I'm hoping, cookie cutter. And I'm hoping they see it as an investment, too. If they put some more money into this frontage, those ones in the back, we won't perhaps be as restrictive. Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Adam? Thank you, Adam. Moving on to City Council comments. Councilman Evans? Councilman, ready? Councilman Coe?
So last Monday, the Des Moines Partnership had an event that they do each year to kind of kick off the legislative session. And it's a, it's kind of a unique event because what they do is they invite in all of the different local chambers to, along with a local restaurant from each community to come and maybe provide a little food. And so the restaurant that was featured for Johnston, so Samantha Weinbrunner from the Johnston Chamber was there, was Cajun Bell, which is a new, it's a breakfast place that's on Merle Hay, right, right next to, oh, Child Serve, pretty close to Child Serve. And so I got a chance, the owner is a guy named Zach Hoyer, and I'm not pronouncing his last name right. He's very, he's from Beaumont, Texas. And you can tell by the big cowboy hat. And Zach is, came to Des Moines through Grandview Football. He played football at Grandview and then stayed in the area and got into the restaurant business. So it's interesting because it's, to me, you know, one of the things we hear from our residents is, oh, I wish we had more restaurant options in Johnston. And I would say, and obviously, that's something I think we don't disagree with, but it's amazing the amount of diverse new restaurant opportunities that have opened up in Johnston, especially here on Merle Hay, and a lot with local ties. So it was just kind of, as I kind of got to meet Zach a little bit that night, it had just been kind of, as I've driven up and down Merle Hay, because I wanted to go by and check out his place, there's just a lot of great opportunities and a lot of positive things. And obviously, city, you know, we're doing as much as we can. JEDCO, it's a priority for JEDCO as well and for the chamber as well. So I think a lot of positive things are being, you know, seen in that front along, especially we're doing great in Merle Hay. When Keynes opens on 86th Street, that'll certainly help 86th Street out a little bit as well. But a lot of great, you know, you've got a lot of great restaurant options over there, Amigo, De Rice, and others as well. So we're making some progress in that area and just kind of wanted to pass that along, so.
I appreciate you giving those shout-outs, Councilmember Coe. And Mayor, you do a fantastic job of greeting all of our guests each time we have a meeting. And especially fun to see you interact with those middle school mockers in that capacity. I'm proud of, I'm proud of all of them, and certainly needs to be said as well, their teachers put a lot of work in, as well as all those kids. And those three other teams helped get that team that we got to meet tonight to their place. So it's always fun to see what our kids in this wonderful school district and wonderful city do. Absolutely. So thank you for making it so open for them.
I'll just be really brief. I enjoyed going to Cork. I tried that out. My husband and his man friends were next door at the brewery. And it was like after a basketball game, and it was so loud. I very much appreciated being able to just go right over here and have a very nice calm glass of wine. So I feel like it's, the two of them will work well together.
Very good. Matt, are we ready for the next snowstorm?
We are.
Very good. Perfect, that's all I needed to hear. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, we are adjourned.